All right, welcome everyone. I Deputy Council President Hall call the May 8 Committee of the Hall Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Council President Walsh and Council Member Martz have excused absences this evening. Our first item of the agenda is public comment. And just to say that there are multiple public comment opportunities on tonight's agenda. First, there's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting. And there is also you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on each of tonight's agenda items. So, real quickly, members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting if you'd like to speak. And I will just wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their virtual hand.
We don't have any members of the public online virtually, but we do have someone here in the room who would like to make public comment.
All right, perfect. So just a few more comments then. So, public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is a question and answer session, while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lectern if you're here in person. State your name, your address, and your relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently and limit your comments to five minutes, please. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, but you're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you're able to. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. All right, with that, clerk, can you please identify the person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Gabriel Waltrip.
Oh, if you press the microphone as a little button there, perfect.
Thank you. Just going to speak about an issue that I had with my former landlord at the Park Hill Issaquah, which is owned and operated by Essex Property Trust. I rented from them from July 2020 to March 22. When I moved in, there was massive pre-existing stain in the carpet. When I left the apartment, I left the apartment clean, even reduced the staining size. And the only damage to the wall was clear way on tail. When I was contacted a week after my termination of the lease, they showed me photos of the apartment being dirty, the stain that was pre-existing, and small marks on the wall. I sent them my zip file, which contains the photos that took minutes before I gave them the keys to exit. They failed to return me the balance of my deposit and refused to give me my money. On October 2020, I filed in small claims against Essex Property Trust. I sold them on November the 18th the notice of small claims. On November the 23rd, Essex sent me a letter which from some of my friends has told me looks kind of like an extortion letter, which reads as "Your full balance is being reported to credit bureaus, which would negatively affect your credit and may impact your ability to rent to other apartments, qualify for credit cards, or secure a loan." The same email was sent to me on the 2nd of December, the 7th of December, the 9th of December, the 12th of December, and finally on the 5th of January. I told them that I did not owe them any money, and they said it was those emails were not sent in error. I also told them that I did not understand their tactics as I was suing them in court. During pre-trial on the 20th of January of this year, a representative of Essex accused me of committing felonies. I did not commit any felonies. On April the 28th, in small claims court, I won. The judge agreed with me that the photos were compelling enough, agreed with me that the photos were compelling enough to dismiss any fees that I might have owed to Essex. Throughout this process, Essex accused me of committing felonies. They accused me of being a liar. They sent me multiple intimidation letters, stole my money, and refused to apologize. I would ask the City Council to reconsider any and all future or present agreements with Essex Property Trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for sharing your experience with us. Clerk, anyone else signed up for public comments this evening?
No.
All right, thank you. Just as a reminder too, that written comments can be submitted at any time to City Council at isaquahwa.gov. And with that, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is ID 1342 Police, Court, and City Hall Planning: Future Options, presented by our Administrative Services Director, Autumn Monahan, and a slew of our amazing consultants. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, City Council. Again, my name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the Administrative Services Director, and I'm here with Stowe Development and Strategies to again talk about police, court, and city hall planning and our future options. So, purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide some follow-up from the April 24 Committee of the Hall Meeting, provide an analysis on city hall space options, receive City Council's feedback, and then review some next steps. The direction we're seeking tonight's twofold. One is administration on the right track in which city hall options warrant further analysis and study as well as research, and whether information is needed for the City Council's future deliberations. A quick recap of our last meeting, which was a couple weeks ago now. There was some general consensus around a few topics. One was keeping Issaquah Police at its current facility and renovating for the department to occupy the full building over at the police station. The second is to keep Issaquah Police and Municipal Court in close physical proximity. And the third was further refining some options for city hall space needs for your consideration. And with that, I'll bring up Bob, quickly, just to do a quick overview again of the cost comparisons you saw last time.
Thank you, Autumn. It's good to see you again, Council. Bob Stowe, part of the slew of consultants that sits here this evening. The last meeting, we presented the various costs associated with scenarios 1, 2, and 3. And those costs include what's on the screen today. Forty-nine million for building in Old Town, this is the new city hall, to scenario 3, which is 39 million. And that same building would cost more in Central Issaquah simply because of land costs and a few additional structured parking. So, that raises under scenario 1, 57 million, to scenario 2, 54 million, 48 million, and for scenario 3. You remember the buy and renovate? We had looked at facility sizes between 30,000 to 50,000 square feet because you're not certain at any one time in the marketplace what you might be able to find in the marketplace. And so, based on some comparables, estimated cost between 17 million for the smaller size up to 28 million for the larger size. And then we looked at lease cost at $45 per square foot, triple net, ranging from 20 years with a 3% escalator all the way up to 40 years. And so, that's why you have a range between 36 million and $102 million for leasing cost. Council asked for a breakdown of what went into those larger numbers that we just revealed and talked about last week. Site prep in Issaquah as well as Old Town is the same. That's based on $27 per square foot. So, roughly, we've used 40,000 square feet for city hall facility and then 20,000 square feet for court facility. These are just simply city hall costs. Hard costs are $750 a square foot, so they'd be the same both when Old Town or Old Issaquah. Lead platinum is a 10% premium that we've added to the cost. Structured parking, a few more structured parking spaces in Central Issaquah required by code at $75,000 per stall or per space. Soft costs are 35% of the total hard cost. Hard costs, as I mentioned, were $750 per square foot. FFNE or furniture fixtures and equipment are listed at $35 per square foot for both soft and hard costs. And then contingency is 15%. Again, the largest difference between Old Town and Central Issaquah would be the old, would be the land cost that we've estimated very conservatively at $180 a square foot.
Thank you. We do have a question. Councilmember DeMichele?
Just quickly, for those of us who don't do construction, what are hard costs and what are soft costs?
So, soft costs would be all of the architectural engineering, planning, everything except for the obtaining permits.
And hard costs are?
All the construction costs associated with the shell of the building, the finishes. Basically, all of the costs associated with building a building for yours.
Okay, thanks.
And the last thing I'll share with you, the council asked for how many cities are currently leasing as a long-term solution or a short-term solution. And we have found that 33 cities are currently, they own their building in King County. The one additional city that's not on your list in your agenda pack is the city of Pacific. And then these three, Black Diamond, Maple Valley, and Covington, are all currently leasing. I know Covington had indicated that they're looking to purchase or build a new building within the next 10 years. And I suspect that Black Diamond and Maple Valley also have some long-term ideas in terms of a new facility rather than continuing to lease. And Autumn, turn it back over to you.
So, we've identified some goals for this project of ensuring safety, responsibly stewarding public dollars, providing accessible, equitable, and exceptional customer service, supporting economic development, delivering enhanced community amenities, and embodying environmental stewardship. So, what you see on your screen is an exercise to try to align some of the options for city hall space with our project goals. And you'll see these by color for likely, somewhat likely, or not likely. And you'll see here for stewarding public dollars, as you just heard from Bob, the more expensive options would be building in Central Issaquah or a long-term lease where we're not building equity and the lease costs continue to grow. You'll also see right here for customer service. This is for a few reasons. One is we don't have a lot of control on where, if it's not in our existing city-owned property. Also, those areas probably aren't, most likely are not near Old Town where we already have a lot of municipal services and a community center and a pool, a senior center, several other things. Also, leasing is probably the one you'll see the most with yellow and red. It provides the least flexibility for us to meet our project goals. So, at our last meeting, council said, all right, is, well, would it look like or is there really viability and option for us to build in Old Town a municipal campus? And so, thanks to Mike with Miller-Hull in helping us quickly put together some sketches. We have one option we're showing you tonight that is very, very rough. This is only an exercise and only as a starting point to really spark some discussion. But the option you'll see here tonight is a campus that would be near police, the senior center, the community center, and the pool. It would utilize Station 71's property, which is listed in the CIP as moving and building a new facility elsewhere. It would integrate with Memorial Field and Memorial Park as well as the Rayner Trail and the Creek Corridor. And there is much more to do as far as visioning on how those would all integrate, but there's opportunity there around all of that park space. And definitely requires further planning and engagement. There's a lot of caveats here as I present this. And that includes things like discussions on programmatic changes, right? We have community hall here nearby, and like I said before, a lot of park lands surrounding our property. So, with all those caveats, this was the one example, thanks to Mike and his team, that they drafted again as an example. You'll see police remains on the current footprint. And then next to that, and with some integration, would be our municipal court. There is two stories there, both to accommodate city hall space needs as well as the court. We'd have council chambers right there on the corner of Second and Sunset, along with a nice public plaza, some meeting space along Second Avenue. To the north, you'll see there's some parking there that would just take up the existing parking we have now. There would be a mid-block crossing to integrate city hall, court, and police with some proposed parking that would take place at City Hall South where we are right now. Also to mention, there is some city-owned property to the south as well that we could utilize. And then just want to highlight again, surrounded by both Memorial Park and Rayner Trail, which is part of the Creek Corridor and part of the parks strategic plan.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Just a quick question. The square that's potential parking, is that this building here? And then we would tear that building down and make parking for the city hall facility? Okay. And then the building that's green-yellow, that's the old Station 71 that we'd be tearing down, the fire station across the street? Okay. I'm just asking because not all of our citizens know the numbers of the stations. They just call and the police and fire show up. So, just to make that clear for our audience, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Just a couple of questions related to the financing model. And the first is, have we, I'm assuming this would be bond, we would do this with some sort of debt and bonding? Have we factored in or are we going to do this with cash?
So, that's actually the next ID that we are covering this evening.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I'm going to say, at some point, I want to see the bonding costs associated with the new building and what that would look like. But then there's a couple of things that look like, I'm just going to pile on, Councilmember Joe, the demo cost is 71 and the demo cost of this building, don't seem to see them in there, but maybe I just missed them. And then since we're going to use the Station 71 space, what's the impact of needing to wait until the new fire station is operational before we start on this one? So, we got that big old dependency and what that does to the timeline and such. So, things to chew on.
Yes. So, that is the first option that administration is proposing for further analysis. The second option, after looking at that grid, is purchasing and renovating, most likely in Central Issaquah. So, a few key points, this would have lower immediate costs. We would be purchasing an existing building, so there would be maintenance costs that would come up sooner than a new building. This would likely be in Central Issaquah. I say likely in that we still have to do some scoping around what properties are available, but that likely would happen in Central Issaquah. We're very restricted to what's on the market, and some scoping would be needed for available We're still working on some further analysis of items we've already discussed and that council has requested further information on. One is expected parking usage versus the codes requirements, so we're still working on those numbers. Also, potential shared space efficiencies with other agencies or organizations, and then some potential timelines, and also some ordering of how things would happen, right? As we were just alluding to, as far as what would have to happen first. As far as the next steps, we are also on the agenda for the May 22 Committee of the Hall. Following direction from council this evening, our team will present some further assessment of the proposed scenarios. And then on June 5, there could be possible city council direction on selecting a scenario to further pursue. And with that, I'll pull up the direction needed slide. That's what we have this evening.
Thank you very much for the presentation. All right. Council, do we have any questions for Director Monahan at this point or any of the consultants? Councilmember Joe, you're first.
Thank you. I don't know if this question can be answered tonight, but what do we know about the depth of the water table here on the valley floor? The library built there, parking, and it went down one floor. I see from the rough sketch that certainly isn't anything final that we are going to do some underground parking there. Does that present any challenges for soil stability and the health of our water table?
Will definitely require more assessment on that if this is an option that City Council would like us to pursue.
Councilmember Hunt?
So, one of the reasons why the Central Issaquah purchase and renovation is, one of the red squares in your analysis, so the less, less, the worst option, is customer service. And so, I wondered, do we know how many people? I know that there was confusion when there were two city halls and people would go one place for a permit or they would go one place for an application, and then they would get sent to the other city hall. But do we know how many people would, for example, come to city hall but actually want to go to the police or like what the efficiency there really is? And I think if we could do, you know, customer service, then that makes that, if we could improve the customer service for that facility, then that improves that option. So, that's the intent of my question, to understand that.
And we have collected some data that we can share from our permit center, which is also acting as our front counter right now. I will tell you, over the years, when we had City Hall Northwest, we had maps at both counters that we would constantly send people back and forth. So, it was pretty common. It has probably changed now that most of our services are centralized, really, at one area besides the municipal court. I don't know if you have more to add?
When we had City Hall Northwest in operation, we kept tallies at the front desk of City Hall Northwest as well as City Hall. And it was one in three people we would send to the other side of town. So, one in three walk-in customers looking for help, we would have to send across town to go to the correct facility for what they were looking for.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think my question, I don't know if you have data on this, but it's a question about if we know how many people like go to city hall but actually need police, right? Because in this case, all the services would be together, so you wouldn't be sending somebody to a different place for, if we had the Central Issaquah City Hall building separate from police and separate from the community center, et cetera, then I think it becomes a little bit different. So, that would be the question is like, how many people actually need court but they go to city hall or how many people go to city hall and need?
And if I could just add, you know, we have been keeping track since we reopened after the pandemic. We are seeing very few people. I hate to even put a number out there without having it in front of me, but the majority of the business that our permit counter gets is either police business or people walking in wondering what time the bus is coming. And so, that, you know, the number of people that come for community planning and development business to City Hall is in the dozens a month. It's a very, very small number.
Does that answer your question? All right, Councilmember DeMichele?
I just wanted to plus one Councilmember Joe's comments. I'd like us to look at the possibility of underground parking or, you know, other ways to do that. I am assuming that the city owns that little white building that is down there. It used to be the senior center, and then it got, I think it's a storage shed or that runs along Second Avenue there. And I was just wondering if that might be an alternative place to put parking, just a thought. And then I think that the idea of putting city hall in Central does raise the issue of how convenient would it be for people to get back and forth? And also, City Administrator Bob Quitz, would it be on a transit line? And I think that would be another question if we're going to locate a city hall somewhere else. We know that if it's located here, it would be on a transit line. Will it be on a transit line if it's somewhere else? So, those would be some of the questions. And I realize we're really, really, really early in the planning process and everything's up in the air, but those would be some based on the presentation tonight. Thanks.
Any other questions, council? Just real quick, you might have mentioned this at a previous meeting and I've just forgotten. Like consolidated city hall, whatever model we go with, I guess consolidated or not, are we envisioning human services and park staff who currently work along here to come also and work out of this office space as well?
Our space needs assessment included the human services staff as well as mostly parks administration, not so much the recreation side, but the parks planning and parks admin would also join city hall.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that's, oh, Councilmember DeMichele, go ahead.
And just to reiterate to, again, the interest in having meeting space for the community, and I presume that that was taken care of. And as we get more and more clear about what the plan will be, love to see what the assessment is about how much of that meeting room space we need and how much will be shared with the public and so forth. Thanks.
Wonderful. Well, if there aren't any other questions, the next part of this item, thank you again for the presentation. The next part of this item is public comment. So, if anyone online or in person would like to provide public comment on this item, you are welcome to do so now. I will turn it over to the clerk to see if anyone is indicating a desire online to speak.
Looks like we have one virtual attendee, but they are not indicating a desire to speak.
Anyone here in the room want to provide public comment on city hall options? Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to the next part of this item, which is council direction. So, if we can, yeah, here they are. Okay, so, the questions administration is asking us today is essentially, are we on the right track and what other information do we need as a council in order to make a decision when this item comes back to us again on May 22? Is that right? So, if anyone would like to get us started, Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. Couple of things that I would like to see. I don't know if we're on the right track or not, but, because there's a couple of questions that I don't have completely answered. One is, I would like to see some more information on the cost comparison, particularly relative to the cost of money. So, what I'm picking up is on the lease, we're not discounting the future payments on the lease. So, the lease isn't, is overstated in terms of its cost. And in terms of the cost of the build or renovate options, we're not factoring the cost of bonding. So, whatever we do, we're not going to be paying, you know, $57 million in cash. So, there's going to be some sort of, some debt service that we need to factor in. So, I'd like to see those comparisons. That would be really helpful to me. We're, it's not even playing field because I think we're making the lease less attractive than it is. And I'm not saying it's a good idea, just it's less attractive. And then on the, picking up on what Councilmember Hunt said, I'd like to have some criteria for the color coding of the matrix, you know, what constitutes a green, a yellow, and a buff, or pink, or whatever that color is in each of the boxes, just so you can get a sense of what that, what really went into saying that this is not really good customer service from this one option versus this one where it would be good. And I loved what Councilmember DeMichele said about transit, that I think that's a factor that should elevate to this matrix. I would like to see, as we look at options, you know, and it's, it may not be likely, somewhat likely or unlikely, but, well, maybe it is, yeah. Because, you know, it's, you know, like if we build across the street, it's very likely we'll still have the 554 coming through town. But if we do it on Gilman, you know, who knows what we'll have. So, I thought that was, that was another thing that I think would be really interesting to put on, on the chart. So, thank you.
Councilmember Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the administration's on the right track considering the two options as we go forward. I appreciate the thoughtful questions from Councilmember DeMichele on transportation. I know that we're going to do things correctly in terms of all of our environmental studies, et cetera, et cetera, along the way. And looking at the water table, and I appreciate the detail that the administration will go into to make sure that that is done in a thoughtful way. My thought, as I'm looking at these plans, is I think that the area out near Gilman has parking lots that were designed for, you know, the big box stores. And the parking space is not necessarily used to its full potential, whether it's on weekends or nights or what have you. And potential, whether it's on weekends or nights or what have you. And that's just to say, if we do something down here in the Old Town area, I would hope that we would be cognizant of not tearing down buildings and just making parking lots to accommodate the numbers for our City Hall, but be thoughtful about putting parking in the basement or tucking away in places where it will be less intrusive and people still have the ability to walk down between City Hall and the community center and go onto the pathways, et cetera, et cetera, and can still enjoy the, the beauty of downtown that's really present when things get quiet at night. It's just really great to take a stroll down here at night. It's quiet. The stores are either closing down and some of the establishments are closing down, but it's just really a moment to kind of find yourself again and reflect on, on your day or what have you. And I hope that we wouldn't lose that if we do put a, another large building downtown here in the city. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else have commentary? Councilmember Hunt?
I think the administration is on the right track with the two options. I'm interested in getting more information on the second option, which is option B. And that's the Central Issaquah purchase renovation option. I am specifically interested in that one, mostly because, getting more information on that one, specifically because we just have less information on that one. And so I think that one, that kind of puts it at a disadvantage. We know a lot more about the site and we can envision it. You made it, you guys made a sketch of it. The other is much more vague because we don't have the specifics. And so I, I would like to consider that. And the main reason I would like to consider that is, it says here there are lower immediate costs, but I believe we had information last time about, there's potential overall cost savings if we did find the right building. And so I think as stewards of, of the cities, of the people's funds, I think we should consider that strongly and should do that scoping exercise and see what's available on the market. That one also, that option has this customer service concern, but I, I am, I would like more information about why that's a concern. And I think there are probably ways that it can be addressed and that we can do a great job with customer service within Central.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Right. I, I agree with what's been said. I like the, pursuing the first and second option. I agree with Councilmember Ray. I'd like to know what the criteria was that, you know, got us our somewhat likely and not likely criteria for those two. And just exactly what, what went into the thinking there. And then other information, I think we covered what other information we might want in our earlier comments or questions. So, so yes, I think you're on the right path.
All right. Yeah, you know, ditto, ditto most of what's been said. I think I am more excited than the last meeting we had about this municipal campus civic commons idea and the sketch that we got and kind of going through the pros there. I think to Councilmember Hunt's point, though, there are a lot of, are pros that seem obvious. This property is already here available to us. It's close to the pool and the community center. And I guess also a, a business district, the creative arts district, are the museums, the historical, historical and cultural importance of this area alone makes it very compelling here. So just for us to have a good, well-rounded decision, it would be good to think a little bit more about this other option so we can kind of have an informed decision there. I think the most compelling thing about Central Issaquah purchasing and renovating there is the potential for economic development, which in my mind could be game-changing to the execution of the Central Issaquah plan. So how should we be thinking about that when it comes down to making a decision about which project we think best meets the needs of the community aligned with the Central Issaquah plan will be really important. We already know there won't be connection to services that there would be here. We don't necessarily know if that would be a bad thing. We also, you know, would need to find a building to renovate, whereas we have land here. Again, just getting, I think, some more information so we can really picture what it might look like there would be helpful. So I agree with that. Yeah, anything else? Oh, Councilmember Ray, go ahead.
I, as I was listening to the conversation, I just had a question that kind of came up. And it really deals with City Hall Northwest. And did we look at all in either raising City Hall Northwest and, and building something new there or renovating that building? I know it's in less than stellar shape, but I just wondered if you had looked at all at using that location?
And it's one of two locations that we own in Central Issaquah. So there's City Hall Northwest and then the At Work property are the two that the city owns in Central Issaquah. We've done some assessment and right now, as you know, it's been shuttered. I think with some discussion around whether that property can be used for revenue in the future for our City Hall space needs.
So that sounds like, no, not really.
Well, let's talk more about that because City Hall Northwest is a really important piece of this puzzle, however you slice it. Either it's a property that can be used again, it's a property that can be sold, the proceeds used toward funding rehab, purchase of new, something in Central Issaquah, something building here. It's a, it's an important piece of that. You know, certainly we're concerned about the existing condition. The council, I'm not even sure how many years ago that was, six, seven, eight years ago, considered the condition of that building at that point. There was some additional, initial surveys done about costs associated with renovation. We believe that the, the building has deteriorated further. That's not to say that for a dollar amount, you couldn't do a gut rehab and start all over. We're also concerned about the location. And as we're talking with you and hearing about what the requirements are, what you think is important, we kind of hold City Hall Northwest up against at least those initial discussions. And our first take is they really don't meet any of those requirements. So with all that said, it's a really important piece of this. We can't hold on to it empty. Either we need to use it, we need to sell it. And that is a key question. And I think as we move into the second item tonight, you'll hear even more from us that we, we want to do that. But really, we're looking to you. If the council feels that that location is serviceable, then we probably need to go back and sharpen our pencil on the rehab costs associated with that. And we're happy to do that. But our assessment at this point is that those costs are pretty substantial. The costs of raising that building and building something new are substantial. And the physical location of that building is not very accessible to people. But again, we're looking for feedback. And so if there is any this evening on City Hall Northwest, on any of those points, we'd love to hear it. Or as you hear the next item, we'd be happy to hear that. But it's a really important point here.
Well, I know, I think that that's a great city administrator. I, I just had not seen it in the mix. And it, so it looks like it was in the mix. You thought about it. You said it's not, not an optimal location. Probably better ways for us to use that, that asset than redevelopment. And that's the next one. So that, that's fine. I, I just, it was a, like I said, it was an afterthought I had that it was kind of glaringly missing from the, the conversation. So thank you for that.
All right. Any more kind of specific direction that the administration's looking for tonight? We've kind of given some overview comments. Other than that, ready for May 22nd?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right then. Very good. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda then, which is ID 1341, the 2024-29 Capital Improvement Plan, specifically city facility revenue options. And it looks like our Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder will be kicking us off tonight, followed by Robert Hamud, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. If you can give us just a few minutes while Robert comes up here to share the presentation.
While we're waiting, can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Andrea Snyder, will any of this agenda item be part of the discussion in the Services Committee coming up on May 16th? Or is that just pure CIP stuff?
Great question, Councilmember Joe. And one of our first slides is talking about the timeline of all of these conversations moving forward. So, so I think that, to, to a smaller degree, let me just say that. We, we feel like this is a big conversation about City Hall facilities. There's a lot of work that needs to be done between these meetings to take the next step and gather the information that you're looking for. So for us to be able to turn around information from this meeting into next week's council committee, we'd really rather keep this, that's a difficult task, first of all. And then second is that for now, while we discuss options and larger concepts and goals for this project, I think we want to keep that with the entire council so we can talk about that together. There will be a time and opportunity that the community gets to dive in and roll up their sleeves and bring forward recommendations to the rest of the council, but not at this point in time. So we'll be focusing on a more general overview of the CIP next week for the Safety Services and Parks Committee.
Thank you very much. That was a fine introduction to this topic tonight as well.
Thank you for the wonderful segue conversation. And so let, let me check in with, with Robert and see where we are in sharing the presentation.
And I'll continue to vamp. The, we, Andrea has been making the rounds to the boards and commissions. A couple already, a couple more this week, getting feedback on the criteria that we've used. And so far, so good. We've, we've, I think she's been to TAB, she's been to Recreation Commission, you're going, been to Equity Board, you're going somewhere, or you're going to Recreation this week.
Environmental Board is this week.
Environmental Board this week. So we've been making the rounds. So as we come to the board, to the council committee, starting this week with the Utilities and Infrastructure Committee, we'll be able to share some of that background with you. But really, we're looking for the, the, the council committees to really focus on sort of the corpus of what we're proposing. And as the mayor shared in her transmittal, we are looking at a, at a transportation initiative that would be funded through sales tax. So that's a key component of this, as we've been sharing with the boards, we'll be sharing with the council committees. And then this all, I think, travels separately for now. Big issues, the issues of the financing, are we about ready? Do I need to talk?
I'm not sure.
Hockey's a very popular sport in Western Washington these days. We, we support the Kraken as they go on their Stanley Cup bid. The Mariners are doing well. They seem to be getting their pitcher together, they're pitching together. And so we hope with economic development, as many of you know, the radio announcer for the Mariners is an Issaquah resident and holds court right here on the corner at Jack's pretty regularly. And so I think there's a clear connection between Issaquah and the Mariners and economic development. And certainly, we will need every revenue we can as we move forward with municipal buildings. And Robert Hamud, our Chief Financial Officer, is here to talk more about that.
Thank you very much, City Administrator Bob Quitz. Okay, we have the technical difficulties hopefully fixed for the evening. That was some fun. If you can go to the next slide, Robert. Thank you. So this slide is really showing almost exactly the conversation we just had. And what I want to make very clear is that how this conversation relates to the CIP conversations and how that relates to the city council retreat we had in January. So if you recall, in January, city council met and we talked about capital projects. And what we heard was that there was some frustration from council and the community about wanting to do more for infrastructure. We also heard those recommendations from the Capital Finance Community Task Force. And so this CIP really asks a lot. What we heard from council was saying, okay, if the city needs resources to get more done in infrastructure, let's have that conversation. So that's really what we're teeing up here with this proposed CIP. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, I think, revenue discussions that we need to have and we're looking forward to having, beginning with tonight. So specifically in the next month to two months, we are wanting to have conversations about, two revenue conversations simultaneously through the month of May. So we have the transportation, TBD sales tax, transportation benefit district sales tax to help fund transportation mobility projects. That's something that's proposed in this CIP that, that we'll be asking how, for your feedback directly. Those revenue assumptions are already within the CIP that's proposed. So we are going to have more of that conversation, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting tomorrow, to discuss what are their recommendations, what's their feedback about this tax and about the projects that would be paid for by this additional revenue. So that conversation, starting at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting, will come back together at the Committee of the Whole on January 12th to discuss more altogether as a city council about the transportation sales tax, the TBD sales tax. Also, simultaneously and beginning tonight, we're having a conversation about facilities revenue. And how do we fund these facility needs? Like City Hall, we also have a couple of other facility needs, especially when it comes to public safety. And we'll be running through some of those tonight and what those revenue options are to help pay for these facility needs. You may recall, we, we talked about this. We previewed some of this conversation for you at the January retreat as well. So tonight, we're starting that conversation. We will also discuss again on May 22nd. That's, I believe, when Autumn is also going to return and with more information that you requested this evening about the City Hall, Municipal Court, and IPD needs. We'll also be coming back as a follow-up to this conversation to talk about revenue options and how to fund facility needs. Then, these two conversations about the TBD sales tax and the facilities revenue options are going to come together on June 12th. Once we reconvene, the council reconvenes as a whole to discuss the CIP, that's when we'll bring these two revenue conversations together of the TBD sales tax and the facility revenues options, and discuss these things in coordination with one another and have a more complete holistic conversation. So I just wanted to set, make sure it was clear, there's a lot that we're going to be talking about in the next couple of months when it comes to new revenue options. And these are how all those conversations are related and when we're going to come back together as a whole and talk about them. Are there any questions about process, what conversation we're having, when, how these things relate?
Councilmember Hunt?
Could you say again which commissions, which of the volunteer commissions will be in this process?
Yes. So we, following the council retreat in January, we met with four of the city's advisory boards. We met with the Equity Board, the Environmental Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, and the Park Board. And we met with them to discuss the criteria that we use to assess the projects within the CIP. We changed a lot of those criteria this year for a number of reasons, which I will go over more in depth later. I know that's not the point of tonight. But so we had conversations with them about how to make sure that the CIP really reflects what they wanted to see in the community investments. How do we do that with the criteria? So they recommended a number of great changes to make to those criteria that you initially vetted in January. Those criteria we used in evaluating the projects, we're going to talk about that a lot more in the committee level. Since that meeting in February, when we met with all of those boards together and talked about these criteria, we then returned to those boards. And so with the proposed CIP projects and said, okay, did, did we do it right? We use these criteria? Any feedback on how we applied those criteria? Any additional feedback regarding the CIP? So that information will be included in your packets for your council committee's consideration. So there's feedback in the M&amp;I packet, for example, for tomorrow from TAB and from the, from the Park Board and the Equity Board is in that. And once I meet with the Environmental Board, of course, we'll include their feedback as well. Great. And so now I would like to pass it off to Robert, who will be taking over the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Andrea. And welcome, thank you, council. It's good to be with you tonight. So the purpose is to provide information and questions in advance of the May 22nd Committee of the Whole meeting. At the May 22nd Committee of the Whole meeting, the council will be asked to recommend whether to add the Municipal Court, City Hall, Police Facility Improvement to the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And just as a note, the Fire Station 71 relocation is already included in the CIP. And also, what was mentioned before by the council earlier today, whether or not to surplus City Hall Northwest to go towards facility needs. And the last point, generally advise revenue needs. And the last point, generally advise revenue options for city facilities. The final recommendation would need to occur by spring 2024, so the revenue options are not an immediate answer, is not needed right now, but it would be needed by next year to proceed with the project and the timeline outlined before. So direction needed. What information do you need to provide feedback on preferred facility revenue tools for the May 22nd discussion? And tonight, we're going to present a couple of those options for discussion with the council. And so on the agenda, we have identifying the public safety facility needs, then an overview of the revenue tool options, and then discussion. Any questions about this agenda? Great. So public safety facility needs, as we've outlined in previous meetings to this point, first is the Fire Station 71, which again is included in the current CIP. And then the three other items that are not, the Municipal Court, Issaquah Police Department, it would be renovations of the City Hall facility, the current City Hall facility, and the City Hall, again, driven by Issaquah Police Department space needs in the current building. So it would be the new City Hall facility is number four. So Fire Station 71, the move to North Issaquah was first established by 2017 Standards of Response Coverage Study. The 2017 policy adopted to limit the number of fire stations and transitioned to dynamic aid car response systems. And then the question was to improve response times for North Issaquah by moving north of I-90. Decided the existing Fire Station 71 could be used for other public safety facility needs. And right now, just as a note, just the relocation of the station doesn't necessarily have to be I-90, but the relocation of the station is what we're discussing. It's a city parcel and potential state park site. Do you want to, Gene is going to come, Gene Paul's going to come up and discuss this slide.
Thank you. And good evening, council members. I'm Gene Paul, the management analyst in the mayor's office. I'm also the day-to-day project manager on the Fire Station Capital Projects, so I'll be covering the current concept. For the current concept of the project, the city and Lakesham Amish State Park are exploring a land exchange that would allow the fire station to be built near the boat launch at the state park. As part of the exchange, the city would provide the state park with the 46-acre parcel that was originally purchased for the fire station but found to be unsuitable because of a historic landslide. Because the state park land was acquired with both state and federal funding, both the State Parks Commission and the National Park Service need to agree to the land exchange. There are essentially two separate processes for these agencies to reach that decision, and there's still many more steps to go, including public outreach, before we can acquire the property. And we're moving as fast as possible through this process. The architect team that's consulting with the city recently provided a cost estimate of $32 million for the conceptual design. That estimate assumes the fire station is built to lead platinum standards similar to Station 72. And it also assumes that purchasing land is not required. However, it does not include any surrounding infrastructure improvements like road improvements or any utility needs. I'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation, but now I'll turn it back over to the CFO.
Just break first to ask if anybody has questions on the fire station specifically?
Yeah, Councilmember Hunt.
What do you expect the impact of the utilities and the roads to build out to that site, since it's not used right now as anything like a fire station?
We're expecting to make some sort of intersection improvement, both for traffic control for that and to allow the fire vehicles to depart, you know, in a timely fashion. But we don't have a cost estimate right now. We just have some very loose conceptual designs for that part. And again, more studies will be needed to identify utility costs as well.
Councilmember Ray.
So if we were to move ahead, what's the kind of rough timeline for bringing the new fire station online?
It's difficult to project because there are two processes, both at the state and the federal level, for the land exchange. Target would be kind of end of 2024. The CIP right now doesn't have end of construction until 2028, though.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I know this is very preliminary, but it looks like we're going to be sending fire trucks across the trail that's right there, just the way the design looks. I would just ask that we try to find a way to have a safe pedestrian signal of some sort when the fire trucks are coming out, so that we're not putting bicyclists and other people using the trail in any type of danger along the way. And kind of have a keen sense, if you will, and sensitivity to that trail as we go. Many people use it to go all the way up to Redmond and points beyond, and we want to make sure that we're not putting a fire station in a place and then making it more difficult for multi-modal transportation. Thank you.
All right, Robert, I think you're good to go.
Thank you. So moving on to the Municipal Court, Issaquah Police Department, and City Hall, the April 24th Committee of the Whole presentation outlined the estimated cost of facilities subject to change for new construction in Old Town as follows. Municipal Court, $14 million, police upgrades, $5 million, new City Hall, $45 to $49 million. And as discussed earlier tonight, there's still the option, of course, central Issaquah, but just for cost purposes, we're looking at that Old Town range for a baseline, just for estimates going forward with this exercise. These are preliminary numbers only, subject to change based on site selection, square footage, final soft costs, and other factors. The revenue needs for the projects. The city will have to issue bonded general obligation debt on a 20-year repayment cycle to fund facility projects. The debt can be issued once or multiple phases based on cash on hand, product status, and timelines. The city, beyond what revenue might exist at the city, the city will require a sustainable revenue source to pay the debt service for the bonds in addition to cash and other fund balances that might be available. So the revenue options, and we've touched on a few of these before, and so we're going to talk about it. So non-tax revenue. So again, there are some proceeds we're looking at to help fund this project. That would include the sale of City Hall or surplus of City Hall Northwest, the use of existing earmarked public funds, including the mitigation in the Lakeside Development Agreement funds that were outlined for city facilities. And that total estimate between ranges from $10 to $15 million. And that's based on current market and also current fund balances from the Lakeside funds. Any questions on that at all? So revenue option one, general levy lid lift, this is one we touched on a little bit with the council before. One property tax levy lid lift would be focused on public safety funding. It would provide an ongoing revenue source for police and fire. It would not have a sunset date. So again, it's a general lid lift, it would be ongoing. This lid lift would be subject to voter approval, either in the primary or general elections, and it would pass on a 50% plus one threshold. The debt for new facilities would be issued from the general fund as a whole, not specifically this levy itself. It would be issued as general obligation or GO debt. The property owners would pay what's called an excess amount based on the ballot initiative. And just for comparison purposes, each $100 of excess levy would generate approximately $1.34 million of revenue annually to the city. So that's $100 on average for property in addition. The revenue option two would be voter-approved bonds. So the city of Issaquah can ask voters to approve bonds to be used towards city facilities and infrastructure improvements per Article 7, Section 2B of the Washington Constitution. The difference between the first option and option two is the voter approval of these bonds must be at least 60% plus one. And there's another caveat, the total number of voters casting ballots of the last election cannot be less than 40% of the number of votes in the last state general election. So it would depend on turnout, whether or not, even if you pass that 60% threshold, if it was ratified or not. If passed, though, the city could cover the entire amount of the bond issuance for facilities and infrastructure through a tax levy increase, and we would do a 20-year issue, so it would sunset after 20 years, and then the levy would decrease. The average impact to a property tax owner or property owner would depend on the amount of the total bond issue the city is asking voters to be approved. And so again, the differences between levy lid lift and voter-approved bonds, the levy lid lift, again, is additional general fund revenues, so it can be used for general purpose revenues for the city. And the revenues are unrestricted. So even if it's directed towards one program or another, it's still considered general revenues coming through your property taxes. Voter approval is lower with lid lifts than voter-approved bonds. And again, there's no voter participation threshold requirement for a general lid lift. Voter-approved bonds raise property tax levies, and they're used directly to pay the proceeds of the bonds. And then the new levy is retired again after the repayment, as I mentioned on the previous slide. The levy lid lift would be, continue to be ongoing after the debt is repaid. So this would be in perpetuity unless the voters took action, the council took action to reverse it in the future. Both options would issue debt on the full faith and credit of the city. So credit agencies actually don't grade one issuance higher than the other. So even if it's voter-approved by a levy, the bond rating agencies would still look at the full faith and credit, looking at the entire revenues of the city, general revenues of the city to issue the credit rating. So again, there's no differences between the two mechanisms to issue the debt in terms of the revenues that the bondholders look at.
Oh, real quick, we have a question on that. Councilmember Hunt.
Yeah, it's just, it's a wording clarification. So it says voter approval is lower with lid lifts, but what I think, is it correct that that means voter, the voter approval threshold is lower?
Yes, the threshold, right. 50 plus one versus 60 plus one.
Okay.
So revenue option three, this is one we haven't discussed as much, is the public safety sales tax. So the city can ask voters, it'd have to go to voters, to approve a 0.1% public safety sales tax, which would be approved by 50% plus one of voters. This would be the same amount right now that the affordable housing sales tax has, which is 0.1%. However, the difference with the point, the public, excuse me, the affordable housing sales tax we receive now, we receive the entire 0.1% back. With the public safety sales tax, 10% of that 0.1% would be going to the King County if approved by voters. So the total annual revenues generated by the tax would be about $2 million. In comparison, we're receiving about $2.2 million from the affordable housing sales tax. The proceeds from the tax can be used for public safety operations or construction and improvement at criminal justice facilities. And the average impact per household, just looking at basic average spending habits, would be about $100 per household for this option.
And Councilmember Ray has a question.
Great, great insights. What are we estimating the debt service would be, annual revenue that we'd need to generate? Is it $2 million? Is it 1.5? Do we have a sense of what that would be on the 20-year, well, on the aggregate of whatever we would have to?
So I have a range coming up with future slides.
So if I just hold on a second, you're going to tell me the answer?
Yes, the big review will come later.
All right, then I'm going to hold on a second.
Anything else? All right, Robert, go ahead.
So estimated annual debt service requirements. City Hall Police Court facilities would entail a range of approximately $64 to $68 million for all projects, again, assuming cash contributions for property sales and fund balance, either grants or outside funding, in addition to what we've discussed before. The fire station cost is estimated to be $32 million. So the city would totally, in total, would need to generate between $8.7 and $9 million of revenue annually to fund debt service and operations of all new and upgraded facilities we've been discussing tonight. So that would be the range that we're looking at to raise. And so the average, I just wanted to show right now, the average property tax levy for the 2022 assessment. If you go down to the bottom, the total average due to the city right now, on average, is $920. So again, there's some fluctuations in there, depending on home values, depending on other items, but it's $920. Voter-approved levy was about 0.092 per 1,000. So right now, there is still a voter-approved levy, about $127 per average property owner. That would be for the previous voter-approved levies for parks, police station, ITS, and fire station 72, so older issues. Some of those other issues will expire by 2027. And so that current levy, that 127, will reduce down by about $82 by 2027. So any questions on this slide at all? So the next steps, May 22nd Committee of the Whole to get direction from council on city facility operations and recommendations. June 12th, the final Committee of the Whole on CIP project inclusion. June 20, council passage of the CIP. June to December, facilities project finalization and revenue recommendations. And then 2024, possible voter action and In the May 22nd Committee of the Whole, council will be asked to recommend whether to add the Municipal Court, City Hall Police Facility Improvement Plan, whether to surplus City Hall Northwest, and again, generally advise revenue options for city facilities.
We do have a question. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Robert, I had a question about our sales tax in town. We're looking at potentially a 0.1% increase in the sales tax, if that's an option that we choose. It seems to me that there's a reluctance or a general acceptance of a sales tax. It's about 9.8 or 9.9, staying under 10%, if you will. If we do add this 0.1%, where would we be assuming no other sales tax bumps occur between now and our decision?
So we actually have a slide for tomorrow night's M&amp;I committee presentation on where we are.
Okay.
We're pretty much in the middle right now. If we go up 0.1%, it's not moving the needle too much compared to our neighbors.
Do we go above 10% in sales taxes?
We're already at 10.1% right now.
10.1, okay.
So right now, we're at 10.1. This would go up. The option tonight that we showed the public safety sales tax, or the option on the TBD that we're showing tomorrow night, that would put us at 10.2% if you selected one of those.
Okay. And based on our gross sales tax numbers, did we see any kind of sales tax fatigue when we went above that 10%? Or did it stay relatively, you know, the same? I guess is my general question.
Yeah, our sales tax, besides 2020, has been steadily increasing each year. So because Issaquah's a hub and we're unique as far as our retail mix and our business mix here at the city, the sales tax rate would have to dramatically change to start losing to other cities. And also, if you look at Sammamish, you look at North Bend, you look at Snoqualmie and Duval and other areas around, all those people come in to shop because they don't have a big retail presence in their cities. And so something would have to dramatically change for that to disrupt that behavior. And again, we'd still be under Seattle. We'd still be about on par with Bellevue.
Well, let's not compare ourselves to Seattle, but yes, let's try to stay below Bellevue if we can. Thank you.
And so the direction we're looking for tonight is what additional information do you need to provide feedback on preferred facility revenue tools for the May 22nd discussion?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. We're in council Q and A at the moment. Any questions from council members? I think Councilmember DeMichele made eye contact with me first, and then I'll come to Councilmember Ray.
And this is probably a question for Autumn, but, and I think we touched on this already, but at what point are we going to bring the public into this conversation prior to the council making a final decision? What's the timeline or the plans? Are we thinking of developing a community advisory group, or are we doing surveys? Or, you know, what's the plan in terms of bringing the community into this discussion?
Our goal is to have a preferred option for us to continue much more scoping, design work, a ton of community engagement. And so laying out that plan once we kind of know what direction we're going on as far as the City Hall options. So the engagement would be envisioned to happen as soon as we know we've got, you know, a direction as far as one of those two scenarios that I presented tonight.
Let me put a finer point on that. Certainly, we would, I think, regroup over the summer. The community outreach in the summer on a new topic is usually difficult, but to be able to move forward in the fall, a lot will depend on what you tell us. able to move forward in the fall, a lot will depend on what you tell us, quite honestly. And so I think we have tried throughout this whole process not to presuppose anything. That's really been a hallmark of our thinking. We want to hear from you. We want to get your direction, and we want to craft what makes sense based on what you tell us versus having something pre-cooked or half-cooked to move forward. But, you know, getting support is really important. That's one of the reasons we had a capital financing task force now almost two years ago when it was first proposed. So this is very much an iterative process. This is yet another iteration of that process, and we would not recommend going to the voters until we felt comfortable that, that this council felt appropriate with what the next steps were and the community did. And if that, we won't do it until we're there, because if we do it too soon, or we do it without the appropriate consultation, we'll lose. And that doesn't build any building.
Councilmember Ray, you're up next.
Thank you. Love the breakdown of the taxes. Thank you for that. So I did some quick math here, and I'm no rocket scientist, but going back to one of your early slides, when you had each $100 in excess levy would generate approximately $1.34 million in revenue. So I just did a quick division, so I'm asking you to check my logic here. So if we're trying to raise, and I'm just gonna use a pretty narrow range, we have there between 8.7 and 9 million. So I'm just gonna use the nine. So that means the, or the, the average household would be paying $671 additional in property tax for every year to fund that? Does that sound about right to you?
Again, it depends on the total issue.
Yeah.
It depends on how, there's a lot of factors. That's why we didn't want to present a specific number tonight. But as far as scenarios, that would be within the range.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just sort of trying to get a ballpark about, is it a $100 problem? Is it $10,000 problem per household? And it's somewhere in between. But it's, it's a notable amount of money. It's not, it's, I, not one I can measure in lattes.
Not in lattes. But again, a side note to that is keep in mind that the $127 in excess levy that residents are paying right now, that'll drop by $82 in 2027. So there will be some savings to that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Joe, go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, what we're considering in the next steps, is the administration asking us to consider just one of the bond issuances or the sales tax? Or is it just one of three? Or are we doing a combination of two of them? Or what does the administration kind of have in mind for, for that? Not to set expectations for any outcome, but I just needed, can we run some of these parallel with each other and do them, or is there just one that we want to do?
I, I think we're gonna have to run them parallel. And again, we're here tonight and over the next several weeks to get your feedback. We won't need all the money all at once, so certainly there's a phasing to this. We think that there are probably different mechanisms to use. Again, tonight, we're really focusing on debt. You could also, as a council, determine that growth in revenue. Sales tax hopefully continues to go with its general purpose. You could designate some of that for debt service. You could designate some of the growth in property tax and debt service. You could cut municipal operations by some degree and devote that to debt service. So there's a mix here, but we want feedback. As, you know, the questions asked about sales tax, for example, there probably is a limit to that. There is a limit to how much we can ask the taxpayers of Issaquah to add to property tax, even for the best of projects. And so we're just trying to get your sensitivities to this. At, at some point, we'll have to take your sensitivities and put it all in a black box and swish it around and come back to you with some specific proposals. But tonight and over the next few weeks, we're just looking for your feedback.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So those comments reminded me of something that I think I saw in the narrative. If we decided to ask the voters to approve a bond, that money can be accessed in separate amounts, right? I mean, you don't have to issue it for the full amount all at once. Is that correct? Or I thought I read something that said you could, you could break up the sale of those bonds over a period of time instead of the whole amount at one time. Is that correct?
Yes, you can. There's benefits and drawbacks. We actually discussed it with our financial advisor, the city's financial advisor last week. There's some benefits and drawbacks. One, you don't know what the rates are gonna be in a few years. Could be higher, could be lower. Also, the project, bonds have requirements that, there's IRS requirements that you spend the proceeds within three years. So some of it would also depend on the construction schedule. But if you're just generating general revenue or general fund revenue, then you have more flexibility to do multiple issues. If you're doing a voter approved debt, that would have to be issued at once.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Go for it.
This is a little bit off the wall, but if we do a levy lift, and, you know, I don't know what we were talking about in terms of percentage, but does that then reset our baseline for subsequent property tax increases, the 1%? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? My question makes sense?
It does. So that does not actually count towards the 1%. So that actually goes, that excess levy rides higher than the 1% rides, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, and that's actually the opposite of what I was kind of asking, because I, I thought that would be the answer I would give, too. But it's the other way. Does that reset our baseline? So if, let's say we're raising $100 today, and so we get a 1%, so we can raise it to a 1%. But if we do the levy lift to, say, 110, can we do, at our 1% now is base is 1.1?
No, it's excess. It's excess.
Okay. That was, that was what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
Yes, it's separate.
I have a couple of questions. Do you think it would be possible before next council touch to kind of get a sense of, of communities who have recently built new city facilities, which I know there aren't that many, but I know North Bend did like kind of right before COVID, Sammamish did at some point, whoops. How they paid for their facilities and what were the kinds of things that they found successful going out to the community? Is that something that could be prepared for us to consider?
Good question, because our, our financial advisor's actually preparing that right now for us.
Perfect. That's amazing. And then also, how should we be thinking about, so clearly, there's a clear delineation to when we're looking at these options of restricted versus non-restricted, too. How should we, you know, as policymakers, be thinking about that? Are there best practices with when to use restricted versus non-restricted revenues? Or for specific types of projects, you want to use this kind versus another? How should we think about this?
There's all, there's no one right answer. If you're looking at different issues, and we did look at issues in several different cities and how they did that, a lot of cities, like North Bend was small enough that they just issued general obligation debt. They had enough sales tax revenue, they were generating enough property tax, and they had a lot of new construction at the same time. So they had that combination that allowed them to build the building. But the building there, I believe, was $12 million, so it was a much smaller facility. Same thing in Mount Lake Terrace, they just built a new facility. It's about the same as between, I think that one might have been a little bit higher, but it was still a smaller scale facility than what we're looking at. And some other cities just incrementally raise their lid lifts. I think that, I believe that's what Marysville did. Marysville's a facility that I toured a few months ago. That's probably the newest, largest building in Puget Sound as far as a new city hall. But that was also a brand-new court, police, fire, and public works at the same time.
So not really any good comparables, essentially. That might be the closest, but otherwise, not, not really.
I think it's the closest just in the fact that their population
Yeah.
rose so much in a short period of time, just like Issaquah's did, as far as the growth.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember DeMichele, you have a question. Go ahead.
So, and just in contrast to that question about the levy lift, if we decided to get voter approval for a bond, is the bond restricted to the exact projects that you list? You know, we've got six projects, and that is what the money goes for, and you can't spend it on anything else? Is that how that, how a bond works?
Yes, there is. You could write some flexibility, and again, this would be more of a bond council question, but you, there is a little bit of flexibility, but in the case of voter approved debt, that's different. So that's more restrictive. It's a little bit less, you could swap projects, but there are some caveats to it. That's more of a legal question on what you can and cannot do on general obligation bonds. Short story, it's not ideal, but it's possible in certain cases, but it's limited.
Any other questions from council? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation and for Q and A on that. I think now we're gonna move into public comment for this item. So if there are any members of the public, either online or in person, who would like to make comments on this item, now is the time to do so. You can press star three if you're on the phone, or raise your virtual hand, or if you're here in person, just raise your real hand, and I'll, I'll call on you. And now go to the clerk. Do we have anyone online who's wanting to make public comment?
We do have someone online, but they're not indicating a desire to speak.
Give it a few more seconds, just in case. All right. Well, then we'll move on to council direction. So if you could go forward to feedback that you're looking for tonight, we will open up the floor if council has any initial thoughts on what information we might need to make a good decision about this. Councilmember Hunt, go ahead.
We have some helpful estimates about the average cost to a resident, community member, but it's not across all the items, and some of them, like the, some of them, it's hard, we have to do a little math to get what the average, or what, what a range of costs would be to residents. So I think that would be information that would be really helpful, especially for the one, for the bonds. We don't have an estimate here about, about how much we, we would be costing the average resident. So I think that would be helpful information for next time.
Councilmember DeMichele.
In that same vein, I, you know, we, we are hearing from people about the high cost of living here and the high cost of housing, and, and that particularly hits our senior citizens. So I, again, I would like to see what the increases would be, and then what kind of relief would we be able to offer. I know that there are King County programs for seniors who are eligible to get relief on their property taxes. So I think with the cost of housing where it is right now, I think it's a really important issue. We want support from across our community, and I think that would be a really important issue. Are we taxing people so that they have to leave their homes, basically? So, so I think that would be a really important piece of information that I'd like to have.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Generally, I'm more in favor of looking at the sales tax bump. I think that there's a argument in the sense that it's, while it is a regressive tax, it does spread the tax burden over a wider population, if you will. And the people that are actually coming into town, using our roads and services, and potentially calling the police or fire, or whatever city services we might have, are then chipping in a little bit to the, to the general fund, or to the, the funds of the city to kind of pay for those services for the time that they're here. Also, I'd like us to consider perhaps doing the levy lid is one of, the, the one that I would favor more. It's a general fund revenue, less restricted for us. But I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question for our council, legal council, but I'm wondering if we could put a promise to the voters in there, so to speak, that we would treat it the same way that we would treat the voter approved bonds, and put a sunset date on there that the council agrees to do. And, and whether or not that is binding on other councils in the future is something that would be, something that we would be held to the fire, too, so to speak. I believe that, you know, if you're a property owner, you're getting a little bump in your, in your, in the, the taxes you're paying, but you are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel in the sense that there will be a reduction after the item that is being funded is paid off. And so I'll just throw that question out for legal counsel to give us some feedback on. That's the way that I think a levy, a levy lid would be an appropriate piece to the mechanism to, to fund this project going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
I like the idea of a levy lift much better than I do a bond, and just like, I like the flexibility and I like the, the requirements to get one passed should we go down that way. I kind of am feeling, Councilmember DeMichele, on the issue around what's this do to our marginal red, res, resident? Thank you. What's the impact that it'll have on them? And the other thing, we talk a lot about our, the cost of renting in town, and make no mistake, if we raise property taxes, landlords will raise rents commensurately. So it's a, it's a pass-through thing. So it's gonna affect everybody, whether or not you are the property owner or not. So I think we have to be very, very careful about this. And I recognize that if we want to do what we want to do around city facilities, we need to have the cash to do it, and, and we need to have the revenue stream to support the debt obligations. So these, this is very tied with the previous, obviously, the previous item, too, because I'm not hearing people say, boy, I wish we had a new city hall. It's not something that people in town are clamoring for. So the messaging is gonna be really important. I hear Councilmember Joe's point about using the sales tax to cover part of this. My only concern with that is if we consider another 0.1% of a transportation benefit district sales tax, all of a sudden, we're gonna be in the sales tax range of places we don't want to be. So I think we have to be very careful about going to the sales tax well, as well. So those are my thoughts.
Anyone else? Oh, yeah, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I know we have a surplus, a surplus policy for surplusing buildings and properties. I'm, and I also know and support the, the recommendation to consider surplusing city hall northwest. But I wondered if there is an option for looking at that surplusing list, again, of potential other buildings that we could surplus that we're not using to their full use? Thank you.
Yeah, I can give just a few quick comments, and then we can go around for a second round if anyone has any. Yeah, I feel the same as a lot of my colleagues, though I will say, I agree, I, I find myself leaning more towards, you know, looking at the surplusing list sounds interesting. What are our other assets that we could potentially liquidate? And, you know, what are, I mean, options one or two with regard to property tax seem, seem like the better options in my mind, especially if we're gonna be considering potential transportation revenue options in the future, or not in the future, very soon. But I don't want to take anything off the table yet, either. I've, you know, one, I was on the, Councilmember Bartz and I were on the Capital Finance Community Task Force, and one of the conversations around sales tax that came up toward the end, as we were writing the recommendations report, is we need to make sure we involve the business community in that discussion early on. So I just put that out there so the administration can kind of chew on how, what's the best way to do that? There is a question of, of, you know, the timing of that and making sure we have something that is actually presentable to get feedback on in a structured way, but, you know, making sure that we're involving their feedback sooner rather than later sounds good to me. I also just want to say right off the bat, too, since we were talking about the fire station, that I fully, fully support us continuing to move forward with that. I was having a conversation with the city administrator earlier, and I thought he made a really good point, which is that lots of stuff in municipal government are scalable, lots of stuff in government are scalable, but fire isn't scalable. At the end of the day, fire is constant, so our commitment has to be equally as constant to it. So I thought that was a good point, and just wanted to say for the record, fully support us moving forward with that project and learning more about the timeline and all that. And you said we are gonna be, it sounds like we are gonna be getting some more information about kind of sales tax in the region tomorrow at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting, so that, that'll be helpful. I appreciate the answer on kind of how other cities have paid for their new city halls and what ballot measures they've had. We have some, some comparable things to look at that are helpful. We have some, some comparable things to look at that are helpful. Yeah, this is a tough one. I don't want, I, I feel like I'm just not in a place at the moment where I can take anything off the table, but I feel myself gravitating more towards option one and two at this point, if that's helpful at all. Councilmember DeMichele, did you have another comment you wanted to add for?
Yeah. Maybe a clarification. On the last one that was presented to us, the safety, so is that, so just the wording of that is, it seems to me that it would only be available for the fire station, the police station. It wouldn't be available for the other projects that we want to do. Is that correct? So, so real frankly, I think that one, for me, comes off the table. I don't know if anybody else is ready to do it, but it, it doesn't meet the criteria of funding the projects that we want to do, if that's a correct assumption, that that's, that they'd be restricted just to the fire and the, and the police facilities.
Also, Council, Councilmember DeMichele, we could use it for the courts. Courts qualify as criminal justice. So we could qualify all three, but not this general city hall.
And, but then we still have the issue of where do we put the, where do we put administration and, and those kinds of things? So personally, I, I usually would favor bonds because I, to me, they are, make organization more accountable to voters. You have X number of projects. This is what we're going to do. This is how much we're going to spend on them. This is what it's going to cost you, and will be done in 20 years, or whatever the life of the bond is. So I like Councilmember Joe's question, which is, can we apply that accountability and that agreement that we're going to, to get all of our projects done, you know, under pro, online, on time, under budget, by such and such a date? And then the taxpayers don't have to pay anymore? So I think that accountability piece is really important when we're talking to voters about whether or not they want to support this, this, these measures that we're, will eventually we'll have on the ballot. So, so that's one thing. But I, I agree with what Councilmember Ray said, either whether it's a property tax or whether it's a sales tax, it's going to be a pinch for the people here, one way or the other. It's either going to hit them through increased rents or, you know, increased property taxes. So, so I would like us to go ahead and what I said earlier. I do think we, before we make a final decision, we really need to hear from the public about what's important to them. Is that accountability piece important to them? Or is the flexibility piece important? I would guess that we'd have good, strong support for improving our police and fire and court systems. So we need to hear from the public about what they're willing to support with their votes. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember DeMichele, we would also, there would be the public element. So after the council decides, we want to look at option one, or say, you do end up looking at two options. We have the remainder of the year into early next year to pull the public, to do public events, to get that information. So that will definitely be part of this process. The other question I do have for you as well, before we move on, and apologize. Also, for Councilmember Hall, you, you brought this up as well. Would it be helpful for the council to get an answer from the bond council on whether or not we can write a ballot initiative that would be for a lid lift? But would it include this would be going towards the bonds? I can get that information for you.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments? I really liked your comments, Councilmember DeMichele. I think part of this, too, is, you know, this all started with the Capital Finance Community Task Force, who, who have said, really sat with this information. And these people come from diverse backgrounds in the community in terms of experience. So for them to come and say, yeah, we, we looked at all this, and the city of Isqwa does not have the resources to meet infrastructure needs of the community. And, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of time to get in facilities, but that was the message loud and clear, that in general, we do not have the resources. So it'll also, I would like to know, too, how we have that communicate, that communication with the public, how do we tell that story before something's on a ballot, before we've, we've had that in an appropriate way? Right? Because I don't know what is and isn't appropriate in that sense. So I would like to learn a little bit more about that as well. Anything else in terms of, any other specific points of direction that the administration would like on this? Any other last comments? Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
This is probably clear for my question, but I think, and you had asked about sensitivities. My sensitivity on this, one, one thing would be, I think we need to do our due diligence on the other options, so that we say, we did look at all the surplus, or we did look at all of the properties. We assess them. These are the ones that we, you know, as an example, these are the ones that we do believe we, we could make revenue off of, that will offset this. So I think we need to do, do due diligence on those and then proceed after we've done that with those offset costs.
All right. I'm seeing lots of smiles. Anything? Okay, great. Then thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for the discussion, council. Let's look at the agenda. Yep, that's right. So that wraps up our last agenda item. We'll move now into good of the order. I have two quick announcements, but anything for good of the order from the council? Councilmember Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. I was at a Snohomish County Leaders Breakfast this morning, and just to give a little bit of an update on the thinking up north on the Blake decision, their county council is going to be considering doing their own statute, their own law within their unincorporated, unincorporates Snohomish County areas to make it a gross misdemeanor for the drug-related offenses. And Marysville recently did pass their own gross misdemeanor law for drug offenses as well. So some of those, the, the thought was that some of the cities wanted to take some action to keep a little bit of pressure on the legislature as they're going into this special session later this month. So just an update.
That's good to know. Any other good of the order items from council? All right, two things. One, Council President Walsh couldn't be with us tonight, but wanted me to remind you that we're starting to think about if we want to do the council senior leadership team barbecue again this summer. So let us know if you have any interest in doing that again. Director York is not here anymore, so we won't lose to Aunt Jenga from him anymore. And Juliana's not in the executive office anymore either, so we have the advantage. So anyways, if you have any interest in that, just reach out to Lindsay and I. We're, we're starting to collect interest on that. Also, if you haven't already, please fill out the Salary Commission survey. They have a meeting tomorrow afternoon and would very much like to hear from us. I think there are only a couple of council members who hadn't responded yet, and of course, we don't know who they are because it's confidential. So please fill that out if you haven't. Other than that, anything from the administration closes out? Yeah?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Council President. And follow up to Councilmember Joe's comments, the administration's been following the discussions statewide very closely with our other cities around the state, and the mayor's decided to move forward with an ordinance that she'll be presenting to the council on June 5th.
All right. Well, I'm sure we'll be eager to dig into that. Thank you. Will that be going to committee, do you think, first, or just?
We're going to bring it right to council.
Right to council. All right. If there's not anything else, then our next item on the agenda is adjournment, and we will adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM. Thank you very much.